Jay Rossman, who is the 20th Judicial Circuit Chief Judge. And the Honorable Judge will be swearing in our councilmembers and our new mayor right now.
Yay!
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. I appreciate the introduction, but more importantly, we recognize Bonita Springs as our home. My wife and I and our children have lived here for a long time. So it's a pleasure and honor to be here with all of you. The first person who will be sworn in this evening is Fred Forbes.
(inaudible).
Did you want your family up? Do you have any?
Families should join the council.
Does someone want to hold the Bible? Place your left hand and raise your right hand. Perfect. Ready? "I, Fred Forbes, solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council." So help me God. Congratulations. The next person who will be sworn in is Peter O. Flynn. If you have your friends or family that'd like to join you. Let me guess, grandchildren?
Yeah.
Grandchildren? How are you?
How are you?
Come on up. Left hand on the Bible, right hand up. Very good. If you'd repeat after me. "I, Peter O. Flynn"
"I, Peter O. Flynn"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council"
"Of City Council"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good God. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing kids.
(inaudible).
The next person who will be sworn in is Greg Dewitt. Would you like to hold the (inaudible)? Great job. Great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Greg Dewitt"
"I, Greg Dewitt"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"Support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council"
"Of City Council"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Next, we have Amy Caramba. Very good. You have someone coming up? Hold on. Very good. We always need help with (inaudible). If you hold the Bible, place your left hand on it and raise your right hand. And if you repeat after me. "I, Amy Caramba"
"I, Amy Caramba"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council"
"Of City Council"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing kids. The next person who will be sworn in is Greg Dewitt. Congratulations. Would you like to hold the (inaudible)? Great job. Great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Greg Dewitt"
"I, Greg Dewitt"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"Support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council"
"Of City Council"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well done. Well done. Congratulations. And last but not least, Peter Simmons. Anybody else? I'll wait. We can wait. Bring them all in. (inaudible). You've had an important job. We have faith of. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Peter Simmons"
"I, Peter Simmons"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of City Council"
"Of City Council"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing kids. The next person who will be sworn in is Greg Dewitt. Congratulations. Would you like to hold the (inaudible)? Great job. Great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Greg Dewitt"
"I, Greg Dewitt"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"Support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of Mayor"
"Of Mayor"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing kids. The next person who will be sworn in is Greg Dewitt. Congratulations. Would you like to hold the (inaudible)? Great job. Great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Greg Dewitt"
"I, Greg Dewitt"
"Solemnly swear"
"Solemnly swear"
"That I will support, protect, and defend"
"Support, protect, and defend"
"The laws of the United States"
"The laws of the United States"
"And the state of Florida"
"And the state of Florida"
"That I will, in all respects"
"That I will, in all respects"
"Observe the provisions"
"Observe the provisions"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the charter and ordinances"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"Of the city of Bonita Springs"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"And will faithfully discharge"
"The duties of the office"
"The duties of the office"
"Of Mayor"
"Of Mayor"
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. (inaudible). We're going to have a little music at this time.
(inaudible). Two check. That's perfect. This button on the front.
Hold it down. Hold it down. There you go. We'll share this mic then. One, two. Share one mic.
No, let's play.
One, two. 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 All right, come on over here. I'll hold the mic. I'll hold it for you. Once I hear you click. I'll hold it for you.
Beautiful, four spacious skies. Four amber waves of green. Four purple mountains majesty. Above the fruits and plains. America, America. God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood. From sea to shining sea. My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord. He is trampling out the vintage where the grapes of wrath are stored. He had Zeus's faithful lightning of his terrible swift sword. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. God bless America. Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her. Through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies. To the oceans white with foam. God bless America. My home, sweet home. God bless America. My home, sweet home.
Mic check. It sounds like the microphone's working. I'd like to call this order to meeting. Just seeing if you're paying attention, folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'd have the invocation with Pastor John Anderson of the Bay Presbyterian Church.
Thank you, Your Honor. Esteemed City Council. On behalf of the pastors and the churches of Bonita Springs, we welcome you and assure you of our prayers and our best wishes for your success as you make decisions with regard to Bonita Springs. Let's bow to prayer. My great God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for your guidance and your wisdom. Indeed, we all say together, "God bless America, land that we love." And so, God, we pray that you would give these folks, that you give them wisdom and power from your Holy Spirit from one eye, that they would make good and just and right decisions, that they'd have good insight and think the best of the community. And we pray for the support of the community. They come around them and be supportive and helpful. And, God, we pray your blessing on Bonita Springs for its successful future. We make our prayer in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to ask Councilman Schlack to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
It would be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the roll call, I'd like to introduce some special guests that are here. I'd like to recognize the former Attorney General of the State of Michigan, Frank Kelly. Would you please stand and be recognized? United States Congressman Kurt Klaassen. Lee County Commissioner Cecil Pendigras. Councilman Bill Lonkart from District Six. Councilman Alex Grant. Councilman John Joyce. Councilman John Warfield. Councilman Robert Wagner. And former Mayor Jay Arndt. Councilwoman Martha Simons. And State Representative Ray Rodriguez. That's the list I have in front of me. Did anybody else sneak in or join us late?
Former Mayor Jay Arndt.
Thank you very much, Martha. Okay, at this point. Roll call, please.
Councilman Caramba.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Okay, now we're going to move to public agenda items. This is public comment only on agenda items. Please come forward, please. Hey, Rick.
Hey.
Let's give a hand to Rick Steinmeier. For those of you that don't know, Rick was one of the three candidates running for mayor. Thank you for being here tonight, Rick.
As I said, on the agenda, 9A, election results. I'd like to thank the Bonita voters for their confidence in me and as your mayor. That's good for a laugh. I am not going to cut my hair. That was my big platform. God willing, I'll be here to call it like I see it. You may call me at 992-3018 with any city problems. Since I am not on the City Council, I'm not the mayor, I am not under the sunshine law. You can speak with me and I'll carry the message for you. Or you can go by the real route and call our city manager, Carlos Swing. After 16 years of labor pains and changing diapers, the city's now a teenager. We will have opportunities to keep the love and beauty of the people of Bonita Springs. It's for the people, folks. A new term, "us people," not "we people," "us people" of Bonita Springs. I thank you for your votes. And the election's over with, and now we have another council. And I have some more comments here soon as I find them. On the agenda items. Yeah, I got 655 votes and one of those are mine, so it's 656. Ah, here we go. I understand 9G with the swimming team, that the public swimming pool will still be open for the public even though the swim team is there. That was my concern, that we might take the people, the public, out of the public pool. 12B, is it possible for volunteers to go to these different committees? They expect our city councilmen to go to these different committees and represent the city of Bonita Springs, but they're not really representing the city of Bonita Springs because they're not allowed to come up with a consensus from the rest of the council. So I prefer to have a volunteer that could not be under the sunshine law to represent the people of Bonita Springs. Strategic planning process, number 9C. Don't we have a charter and a budget? And of course, then there's the CAFR, which I had to call and find out what that... Everybody knows what a CAFR is, right? Anybody know what a CAFR is? That's the money, honey. That's the study of the money. Don't we have a comprehensive plan that was supposed to guide us in the future? So best of luck, guys and gal, and I'm really happy for the election that's over with, and I'll see you in two years for Councilman Schlack. Thank you.
Anyone else with public comment at this time? Green light.
Okay. That's the most honest politician you'll ever meet. I'm sorry. Good luck to you, Rick. And he's also one of the hardest working Bonitian volunteers, too. And one of the funniest guys. Sorry, it's not getting his haircut. I just want to mention, first of all, congratulations to all of you. Much success. Your success is our success, hopefully. And I want to mention, there's an item on here about the pond on a royal. Councilman Mike Gibson, that was, you know, my legacy onto his legacy. And I know there's some concern about what's going to be planted there. I'd be happy to send you photos of all these plants, if you like. But we've been waiting since January, no, February 2014, when I left office and you got in office, to get this thing planted. So there is an extension until September on the grant that's currently for the landscaping of this pond. Let's move it along as soon as possible. We only have a certain amount of money. There's no more money to it. And I would also say, there's three trees in there that I wouldn't recommend planting. That is a sausage tree, a silk floss tree, and a trumpet tree. Those aren't good detour trees. They're poisonous. So those three are kind of messy. You wouldn't want those. But everything else is going to look lush and beautiful and tropical and be really a beautiful picture on the lake. So congratulations, guys. It's great to have my friends up here. And good work.
Thank you. Anybody else with public comment at this time?
I'm Carolyn Gallagher from Cedar Creek. And I want to speak on item 12B. But first, I just want to say congratulations to all you new City Council members. I'm very excited about this new council. So I think it's wonderful. Good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Bonita Springs Utilities is being removed from the committee assignment list, leaving, I guess, the full council with the responsibilities. And I don't fully understand why the city is removing the BSU committee assignment. Water is so important, and the removal of this committee assignment is worrisome to me. A dedicated committee member, our liaison assigned to BSU, would give, quote, "the water," some in-depth attention. And it's something that the full council couldn't easily do. The liaison person would learn and bring his or her knowledge of important issues and facts back to the full council. Both the city and BSU should fully support and be open with the person chosen and encourage his or her interest and questions. The liaison should provide a quarterly report at minimum, but also any additional information to the city as it becomes available. If the workload is too much for a City Council member, then someone from the city staff should do this function. Or a full-time resident of the city could be asked to volunteer. And I think that goes along with what one of our last speakers said. And there should always be a dedicated liaison, in my opinion, because the water is too important. I also have lesser concerns about removing FPL and TCO, but primarily water. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I speak tonight as a resident of Bonita, not as Congressman. The last time I was here was roughly two years ago. And remember distinctly, I was here with my mother. And some things have changed since then. But I look up here today and you all, and I see patriots. And I see people that love our city. And I can almost imagine the faces that were here before you came. And for those of you that are new. And remember, you know, I can imagine those that aren't here, that used to sit there for so long. And they were patriots. And they loved this city. And so, as a resident of Bonita Springs, I want to make it very clear that I appreciate and give thanks to all patriots in my country, whether I disagree with them or not. And that needs to be said by all of us, I believe, for our city to move to a new day. And so even for those of you that were here two years ago, I express my appreciation for your service. For those that are new and decided to go through what I went through, well, you earned it. And there's nothing easy about what you did. And only having gone through it does anybody really know. And so I thank you for that. And most of all, for those that aren't here, I want to express my appreciation for their service and the previous mayor and how hard they worked for the benefit of our community. A lot's changed for me, for our community. My mom's gone now. I hope that we will have a more positive tone. And I hope that we will do better on how we deal with each other. And if we can do that, we're going to have disagreements. But then this will all have been worth it, and we can come together and lead our city future in a positive way. Again, I express my appreciation for y'all's leadership and your courage to do this. And most of all, my appreciation to those that are no longer here. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for what y'all are doing.
Thank you, Congressman Klaassen.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Widdamore. I've worked for the--
Bonnie, pull that down just a little bit, please. There you go. So we can hear you, dear. Thank you.
I'm representing the Bonita Springs Historical Society, and I'm putting together something to talk to our Rotary about. I ran across the 1910 census of Bonita. We had eight families in Bonita, and every single one of them was a fruit farmer. Just a tidbit, so we have come a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public comment at this time? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, lady, gentlemen, congratulations. I want to talk about the item on the agenda, 16040084. That's Concerns, the List of Committee Assignments and so forth. And not on that list is the item mentioned in the Comprehensive Plan of the City under parks, under open spaces, where under 131, there's provision for the establishment of a committee for Parks and Recreation by the year 2010. No such committee has been formed, and I urge that such a committee be formed. The other item I want to talk about is the removal of BSU, which has already been mentioned by other people, and I join in urging that BSU is not removed from that list. BSU has provided admirable service to the city since its formation in 1971, and I was shocked that at the annual meeting on the March the 15th, only 22 people turned up out of the 43,000 hookups that we, that BSU has, meaning we trust them to provide us with water that's clean and pure, unpoisoned, and plenty of it. But frankly, we don't know. We have precious little information from BSU. They don't publish any minutes, and when questioned about that, they said, "Oh, our computer system, our program doesn't provide for that." Well, that's a pretty sure thing that, that's not correct. We need to have minutes, you are not provided with minutes, staff is not provided with minutes. We don't know what is going on, and I urge you, before something happens that we should know about, that something is done about it by appointing somebody to either the board there, if that's not possible, then at least somebody attend their meetings so that we know what's going on. It would be a shame if all of a sudden, there were a few dead people in hospitals because of poisoned water. They will be coming to your doorstep.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Max Levine, I work for Cardom LLC, we're the folks trying to build a car wash on our property on US 41. First of all, congratulations to the new city council. We obviously hope that the new council means a fresh, a fresh look at the dispute between my company and the city government. As you may know, my company has been forced to sue the city in a Florida court when the prior council rejected a neutral experts recommendation to let us use our land as we intended when we bought it. Recently, outside counsel for the city, Chris Donovan filed a motion in that court. Benita taxpayers footed the bill while Mr. Donovan researched and wrote a 12-page section on why our suit had to have been filed on a Saturday. There's only one problem, you can't file suits on a Saturday. Everyone who's ever stepped foot in a court in Florida knows that filing deadlines that fall on weekends are automatically extended to at least the following Monday, which is when we filed. The Florida rules of judicial administration are crystal clear on that. So why am I talking about a filing deadline? This raises real questions about the quality of advice the city council is receiving, and also raises a more basic question. Why is it in the city's best interest to do these absurd things just to prevent a local business from coming to Benita? So again, congratulations, I really hope that this is an opportunity for a fresh look at the dispute, and for a way to solve this outside of the courts in the best interest of the city of Benita. Thank you.
Thank you.[875.04][875.04](applause) Any other public comment on agenda items at this time? Seeing none, we'll move along. Consistent with the city charter and the code of conduct for its elected officials, it's time for us to take nominations for deputy mayor. Does anybody have a nomination for deputy mayor?
I do, sir. I'd like to nominate Stephen Slakka as one of the elder members of the council, I think he would do, uh, serve--
Elder?
Well, he's been here longer than the four of us just got elected.
Right, okay.
Greg, I thank you so much for the nomination, but I'm going to have to respectfully decline.
Other nominations? Fred?
I'd nominate Peter O'Flynn to be the deputy mayor.
And I will second that.[931.00][931.00](applause) Any other nominations? I move reclosed nominations? Is there a second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in, opposed, say no. Congratulations, Peter.
Excuse me, excuse me. Point of order, point of order, mayor, mayor, the charter requires a roll call vote for everything, so if you would be so kind to allow the vote to be handled by roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakka?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Abstain?
No.
Yes.[978.63][978.63](laughter)
He's kidding. Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
The motion carries, congratulations, Peter.[989.00][989.00](applause)
Mr. Mayor, Council, let me just say, I am absolutely honored that you've chosen me, and very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations, Peter. And now, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and we have one for the Florida Green Building Coalition. Where is that microphone, Steve? Is that right there?
They should have one down there.
Okay.[1026.11][1026.11](pause) Yeah, Jennifer, you could, if you could join us, please? Jennifer, who are you? Great. The city of Benita Springs would like to pretend, present this certificate of recognition to Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan, recognition for her exceptional leadership and the achievement of the city of Benita Springs, gold level on the Florida Green Local Government Certification from the Florida Green Building Coalition. Please, Jennifer.
Yeah, there we go. Good evening, I would like to present Suzanne Cook, she represents and is the executive director of the Florida Green Building Coalition. This is the third-party verifier that certified the city of Benita Springs in our gold level certification, so thank you for joining us, Suzanne, we are greatly honored for this appreciation, and we welcome you to Benita.
First of all, thank you for letting me be here tonight. There were a couple of comments made tonight. One was with the congressman who said he hoped for better things for Benita Springs, and after my presentation, I think you'll hear that, that Benita Springs is on a great path for better things. Several comments were also made about protecting the water, and again, you'll, you'll hear that Benita Springs is doing that. So with that, let me start. We're here tonight to recognize Benita Springs as a Florida Green Local Government after it successfully met the sustainability standards established in the Florida Green Building Coalition's Green Local Government Certification Program. Benita Springs earned 53.4% of its 253 applicable points, earning it the gold level certification. The program-- Benita Springs is the only city in Lee County to have earned this designation so far.
All right.
The program criteria includes evaluations of energy and water usage, air quality, health issues, land use, recycling and waste disposal, maintenance policies, education programs, purchasing practices, regulatory policies, and many other things. The designation demonstrates exemplary leadership by the city council that provides the framework and support to move the program forward for, to better manage the local government operations. Excuse me. Their leadership in this effort will help protect and conserve the community's natural resources, enhance the efficiency of government thus reducing the cost to taxpayers, reduce and raise public awareness about the benefits of sustainability. In order to achieve certification, Benita Springs staff led by Jennifer Hagan, who is planner and sustainability coordinator with the community department, community development department, undertook an extensive audit of the local government's operations, and then perform, and, and performed an audit from every department. From there, the team used the Florida Green Building Coalition's tools to identify methods to improve sustainability and their business practices and operations. One goal of the program is to lead by example, to encourage the, to encourage and protect, I'm sorry, to encourage the private sector to apply the same principles through creation of green homes, green commercial buildings, and greenland developments. Bringing together community residents, businesses and residents with common objectives and overlapping interests can lead to integrated environmental solutions to local issues. But I have a long list. Some of the Benita Springs green achievements now, I know, on any eyes to glaze over, remember, they're a gold level certification, so this is a long list. Their achievements included environmental commitment included in the city's mission statement and comprehensive plans, provide website information dedicated to the city's sustainability program, monitors and tracks local government entity and, energy and water use, provides air quality index and water quality testing on the city's website, adopted a green standard as the official minimum criteria for new and renovated government buildings, including a green landscaping ordinance, certified local government landscapes to the Florida Friendly Landscape Program, and applies best management practices in public parks and amenities. Trains and certify select staff as certified orbis, minimizes heat island effect and stormwater runoff of recreational areas with the use of trees, highly reflective materials, and pervious surface. Implemented energy-efficient lighting and controls for outdoor recreation parks, utilizes solar or other energy-efficient streetlights, implemented the Florida Department of Transportation's 12-step towards walkable communities into the planning process. And, and aside from that, Jennifer earns, comes by this achievement honestly, because I understand her father has a master in urban planning and through crime prevention. So, okay, so on with the list. Adopt as a policy healthy street designs to minimize stormwater runoff and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by encouraging walkability. Implement advanced stormwater controls and waterfront considerations to reduce hazardous waste discharge into natural water bodies. Developed an environmentally preferred purchasing program for local government operations. Employ's green cleaning and maintenance policies. Participates in the city's for climate protection campaign aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Created an endangered land conservation purchasing program. Developed and implemented plans for invasive species removal for, throughout public lands. Offers incentives for Florida Green Building Coalition or Lead Green Building Certification of residential, commercial, institutional, and land development projects. Affordable housing constructed by the city and other parties is mandated green. Provides incentives for construction of green affordable housing. Conducts a green building awards program and, and publicizes green building case studies. Enacted and enforces a tree preservation or land clearing ordinance. Enacted a sea turtle ordinance and manatee protection plan. Developed a boat facility siting plan for preservation of key habitat and protection of endangered species. Enacted and enforces the Florida Friendly Landscaping Ordinance for new construction. Enacted fountain and water feature standards to ensure that best management practices are used for water conservation. Minimizes chlorine at community pools. Provides green, green building education materials to the community and operates an environmental demonstration center. Offers free or discounted green products to the public. Maintains an active student-teacher education program. Involved students in green projects within and outside the school. Offers education in organic farming, permaculture, and sustainable agriculture. Has teamed with the tourism department on ecotourism and tracks the amount of tourism that takes place in eco-related activities. Developed a historic preservation ordinance and funding mechanism to aid with historic preservation, and because of those efforts, achieved Florida Main Street designation. Provides reusable mugs or water bottles to all employees. New employee orientation includes the city's general commitment to sustainability. Enacted local government policy so all computers and related equipment is turned off when not in use. Enacted a policy so all computer equipment purchased has conservation features. Recycles end-of-life equipment, electronic equipment. Implemented recycling stations for plastic, glass, aluminum containers at recreational areas. I'm almost there.
Moving on to the last page, I might add.
Enacted mandatory recycling. Enacted mandatory recycling of typical household recycle pools and construction and demolition waste. Provides public transportation route information, alternate commuting options, and carpooling information on the city's website. Developed a construction project waste management and recycling plan. Maintains a departmental green fleet program for city vehicles. Utilizes integrated pest management. Requires recycling at all local government buildings. Adopted policies to encourage alternative onsite wastewater and water reuse technologies. And I haven't seen this in other certifications, and I'm very glad to see it here. Approved Appendix C of the Building Code that allows gray water recycling systems. So in closing, I want to congratulate Jennifer specifically. We've been doing this, well, we're 15, 16-years-old. The local government certification program has been in effect since 2004. The Benita Springs application package was the most well-organized package FGBC has received to date, so you did an excellent job.[1696.65][1696.65](applause) So congratulations to the city council and to the citizens of Benita Springs. Great job.
Thank you.[1710.97][1710.97](applause) There's a plaque. There we go. Boy, that's some plaque, look at that.
Nice.[1728.36][1728.36](applause) That's huge.
Great. Congratulations, thank you very much. How you doing, Sam?
Congrats, you want me to leave this here? Yeah, thank you very much.
You got a shorter speech, Sam?[1768.51][1768.51](laughter) Sam, for, you do so much for the city, but this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Sam Vincent, in appreciation and recognition of your exceptional efforts in bringing the Benita Springs Library to downtown. Thank you. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons.[1792.24][1792.24](applause) Your ongoing tireless dedication and outstanding professionalism to our community is deeply appreciated. Sarah Breton? In recognition of the heroic actions of Deputy Sarah Breton, on March 21st, 2016, Deputy Breton selflessly participated in the successful rescue of an individual trapped in a submerged vehicle. Your ongoing tireless dedication and outstanding professionalism to our community is deeply appreciated. Thank you very much. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. These will all be considered unless somebody would like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull F, please.
Okay, F?
I'd like to pull C, please.
C? Okay. Any others?
A move to approve the rest?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilman DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilman Slahta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Okay, C? Greg, if you'd like to address that?
I just wanted to address it. I had two questions. First, first one's a statement. I think it's a very worthwhile grant that we're applying for. My only question is to, I guess, Carl, is the $40,000 enough? Last year was $32,000. Is the other $8,000 going to be enough for next year?
I'm going to allow Arlene to handle that.
Sure. Good evening. We apply each year for $40,000 and then the city matches for 40, and then we go through a negotiation period. Councilmember Stephen Slahta is our liaison to that board. All the other jurisdictions apply for that same funding, and we have several meetings and then we work through a process with that. When we originally applied last year, we got down to $32,000 what we were awarded finally, but we've maintained our match of 40. And that actually just funds the deputies on the water and the fuel and maintenance costs. And it gives us an extra person solely dedicated to Benita Springs Friday through Sunday, and if there is a holiday on a Monday, they would schedule, so they would be there that Monday as well.
Yeah, and I just wondered, is that enough? Do we need to do more than that? Do we need to apply for more of it? Just because I go out boating all the time and I know that it's getting busier and busier out there with the population fluctuating as it is and Benita getting bigger, is that going to be enough? Should we go for more?
I think what we've been able to negotiate and grant, that's about the dollar, they are only allotted so many dollars each fiscal year, so that's the amount we've kind of settled on, but there is an opportunity, if you'd like us to address it in the budget, to see if you would like to supplement extra man-hours on the water. We can, we can look at that budget item as far as the city's portion of the fund.
All right. Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second or any, excuse me, any further discussion? There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slahta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Okay, Peter, you, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about Royal Pond. I'm for the landscaping, that's for sure, and I know Martha and others have worked for a long time to get the money for it, and we have some good grant money coming in, so I've got no question about that this is a good project. I have just a request, though, and I chatted some with Matt today and with Carl previously, and that is that I'm just wondering if we can get a rendering of what it actually will look like. And the reason I say that is we have had other landscaping projects from time to time, and people, properly, residents, ask questions about it. So, I think it would be good to, as from a process point of view, to simply understand what that landscaping will look like. Not that we're going to sit around as a council and be landscape architects, but just from a process point of view to take a look, and I wouldn't expect Matt to do that here today as much as maybe come back at the next meeting, and between that time we can look, is my notion, but I'm for the project.
Matt Feeney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
On the public works director, for the record. This, if you'd like a little background on this project?
Please.
This is something that we were asked, I think it was mentioned at Public Comment, to apply for an FDOT landscape beautification grant for the Royal Pond. Concurrently, we were asked to remove the cattails. The pond was essentially 100% choked with cattails. So, we partnered with FDOT. We were successful in getting the grant award back in December of 2014. They were slow to execute our grant paperwork, and during that process, they went through some personnel turnover, so we're in a position now with those folks to move forward with executing the landscape planning portion of the grant. In the meantime, we removed all the cattails from the pond, which was a fairly sizable task, but we were able to knock that out. So, tonight, we were asking for approval to move forward. We received bids from two contractors. We had one in the amount of $176,017.17 from Hanula Landscaping and one from PNT Tractor for $201,312. We do have a set of plans, but they are in a plan view, which, which in essence is an overhead view, and we certainly can generate some renderings if you would prefer. It would require us to go back to our designer and have him actually hand draw those, because that's essentially what a rendering is. It gives you a perspective from the roadway view.
What do you think, Pete?
Yeah, that would be great, Matt, if that could be done at a reasonable cost, and we, we talked about it today, it sounded like it would be.
And just for full disclosure, what's the cost roughly? I know, ballpark?
Ballpark, I would say it's probably around $1,500 or hopefully a little bit less. Unfortunately, what it requires is the actual person, the designer, to draw, hand draw. What they do is they hand draw it, so it's like, it's called a rendering because it's like an artist's rendering.
And you'll competitively bid that?
Sorry. We can see, you know, I'm not real familiar as to whether other landscape architects would be willing to draw somebody else's vision, so I'm going to have to ask those questions and see if someone else would be willing to answer your question.
So, just among the things I'm interested in just to see is, obviously, when that storage unit went up, it caused considerable concern from the view from the Royal neighborhood. So, I just think from, once again, from a diligence and process view, to just get a sense of how that will be addressed. I don't expect that huge building to be completely hidden, but I'd like to be sure that we come away certain that in the best way we could, we address that concern rather than have plants go in and then people say, well, gee, why didn't you even look at that? So, and I'm not second guessing what Matt's doing as much as thinking about what the process ought to be like on council, that's all.
Fred, why don't we start with Fred? I saw his hand first, Mike, and then we'll go to you.
The question I'm struggling with is...
Yeah, Fred, speaking to the microphone, buddy, sorry.
Are we talking about awarding it now or waiting till the next meeting when you see the rendering?
I'm just, I'm just saying wait two weeks, that's all.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, we already have the overhead plan. And we know which plants are going where. We could just look at a picture of those plants and then you could get a visualization of how it's going to look. I mean, we're looking at spending an extra $1,500, but, and we're probably going to go through with this anyway, so do we need to spend the extra money is where I'm coming from.
It's just, to me, the message, the lesson that perhaps came out of some of the US-41 landscaping, where what we did have also was looking down. We had certain elevations of the corner, but I think certain people had concerns coming out of it later. Gee, I thought it was going to look different from a side angle. That's all.
And I guess I would, I'll jump in here. I guess I would mirror that thought. We thought 41 on our latest project was going to look a whole lot different than it looks. Terry Street looks fabulous, but I think there were a lot of surprises on US-41, so I'd be the last one to spend a needless $1,500, but I guess, you know, in this thing, I think we're, no more surprises on landscaping.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I have not reached out to the designer. We, I talked to Councilman O'Flynn fairly recently, so I don't know his availability as to whether I can get it completely turned around in two weeks, and I don't want to speak for someone when I, when I haven't done my homework.
Well, Matt, if you would check into that, please, and do we have a motion to table this for a few weeks?
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
May I have further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg, I'm sorry. Further discussion, I'm sorry.
No, my question was, since a former councilwoman brought up some issues about the trees, were the trees specified in the grant? There has to be these certain ones, or is that something that staff picked out? Or do we want to go down that road with the different types of trees?
Staff did not pick those trees out. We hired, you don't want me to pick those trees out. We, we had the designer design the, the trees, and some of them are ornamental in nature to try and bring, there was some discussion about eventually turning this into more of a park space, so some of them are ornamental in nature, and yes, they are approved by the FDOT council. I, I think we could probably work with the, the grant administrator once we get under construction if we needed to swap some things out. I think there, I've got to assume there would be some flexibility there.
Further discussion, counsel?
I just wondered if we could sort of go ahead with this process and still have and reserve an ability to review certain aspects of the plan that we could get subsequently. And is there a timing issue because we're already late with this?
There is, there's a bit of a timing issue. We, and a lot of it unfortunately was generated from the folks we're partnering with, and they recognize that, and we've already received a 30-day or a 90-day extension which takes us to completion by September 28th. The contract right now that's before you provides for 60 days to a substantial completion and 75 to a final, so, you know, we would ask, unless we explore the idea of another extension, I haven't reached out to that gentleman just yet, you know, if we don't have an answer at the next council meeting, we would be needing to talk to them either about extending or seeing if the contractor can perform quicker than what the current construction contract outlines in terms of timing.
Further discussion? Yes, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Matt, you talked about the, talking to the contractor. Have you worked with this contractor before?
He, he's a local contractor. It's Hanula Landscaping is the parent low bid here. They've done a lot of work in Collier County Landscaping that you see on the roadways. We've used them recently for some smaller projects on Shangri-La Road. They've bid several of our jobs. They're actually a local contractor here in Benita, so.
The reason I bring it up is, I kind of agree with Amy to get this thing going and do it. If, if we go ahead and prove it today and council doesn't like the look of it, maybe a tree over here or the way we're hiding the, the storage unit, we could change it then rather than wait two to four weeks possibly to get this thing going and have to ask for an extension. Would that be a possibility, you think? If you've worked with them in the past?
I think you can, excuse me, I think you can certainly add to the landscape or possibly work, as the city attorney pointed out, through some formal change order process, work through changing the type of tree to maybe get more. If the concern is coverage, as Councilman O'Flynn said, I think it's, it's a given that you can add. Some of the challenges we faced on US-41 were billboard restrictions and, and clear zone and safety restrictions from traffic safety that didn't give us that flexibility as much. This pond is, is really away from all of those issues, so I think you certainly could add at the city's expense.
But we have.
If you didn't, if the look was not enough coverage or screening, so to speak.
Lack of better terms, we have $200,000 to spend? Is that what the grant's for, correct?
The grant is for 100 currently. The bids are at 176, and counting the grant dollars, we have about $300,000 in that fund.
Further discussion? Mike?
I would say that we go ahead with it and, you know, if something needs to be changed, we make adjustments down the road.
And that, are you saying that not, and not pay for the $1,500? And not pay $1,500 for the rendering?
Exactly. Well, no, if, if we want to have the rendering to see, we can still do that, but we can also move along with the, the project.
Fred, thoughts?
Well, if, if we're not in any jeopardy of losing a grant, which is what I've heard, I don't see the problem in waiting two weeks to see if we can get a little better information and definition of it. Now, if we, if we were in jeopardy of losing a grant, that'd be different.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Carl? I want to be clear, we cannot guarantee two weeks. Okay? We, we have not reached out to the designer to determine whether or not he's going to be available to complete this task, to get a rendering back to you in two weeks, so I just want the council to be clear on that. We will try to move it along as quickly as we can, but we cannot guarantee two weeks right now.
Or the price either, correct? We don't know a price either.
It's, it, yes, sir, it's a ballpark, but I would say it's with, within that reasonable range.
Fred, go ahead, yes.
Well, I've, I've had some experience through HOA, and the kind of software that they use to do this is not real complicated. They, they go out and take a picture of the area that you're going to landscape, and they plop in trees and things, and it's all done pretty much computer and then a little bit of photo shopping, that's it. So, even if that source wouldn't work, I can, I might be able to direct them to a couple other sources.
Well, I talked to Councilman O'Flynn about this. You're absolutely correct, Councilman Forbes. There are some software that can do that. However, what we had discussed was, was an actual rendering, which is hand drawn.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to get a sense of what it looks like.
Okay. We can certainly, you know, we can certainly look into that aspect and keep the cost down to a minimum. The product won't be quite what maybe some of the sitting council folks have seen. It'll, it'll be a little, a little bit different.
What I was saying to Matt today was that if you were spending $200,000 on your house for landscaping, you'd expect to have a sense of what it looks like, that's all.
There's, I believe there's been a motion and a second to delay two weeks. Do we want to take a roll call on that and then we'll, well, let's roll call on that motion?
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slahta?
No.
Okay. Is, is there another motion? Matt, do you have further?
I just didn't know, sir, if you needed me anymore.
Oh, no. You're, you're good.
Thank you.
I'd make the motion to go ahead with it now and still do the computer rendering. That way, we can see it, and if any adjustments need to be made, they can be made.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
over here, or the way we're hiding the storage unit, we could change it then rather than wait two to four weeks possibly to get this thing going and have to ask for an extension. Would that be a possibility, you think?
I think you can, excuse me, I think you can certainly add to the landscape or possibly work, as the city attorney pointed out, through some formal change order process, work through changing the type of tree to maybe get more. If the concern is coverage, as Councilman O'Flynn said, I think it's a given that you can add. Some of the challenges we faced on US-41 were billboard restrictions and clear zone and safety restrictions from traffic safety that didn't give us that flexibility as much. This pond is really away from all of those issues, so I think you certainly could add at the city's expense.
But we have.
If you didn't, if the look was not enough coverage or screening, so to speak.
Lack of better terms, we have $200,000 to spend? Is that what the grant's for, correct?
The grant is for 100 currently. The bids are at 176, and counting the grant dollars, we have about 300,000 in that fund.
Further discussion? Mike?
I would say that we go ahead with it and, you know, if something needs to be changed, we make adjustments down the road.
And are you saying that not, and not pay for the 1,500? And not pay 1,500 for the rendering?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, no, if we want to have the rendering to see, we can still do that, but we can also move along with the project.
Fred, thoughts?
Well, if we're not in any jeopardy of losing a grant, which is what I've heard, I don't see the problem in waiting two weeks to see if we can get a little better information and definition of it. Now, if we, if we're in jeopardy of losing a grant, that'd be different.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
Carl, thank you. I want to be clear, we cannot guarantee two weeks, okay? We have not reached out to the designer to determine whether or not he's going to be available to complete this task to get a rendering back to you in two weeks, so I just want the council to be clear on that. We will try to move it along as quickly as we can, but we cannot guarantee two weeks right now.
Or the price either, correct? We don't know a price either.
It's, yes, sir, it's a ballpark, but I would say it's within that reasonable range.
Fred, go ahead, yes.
Well, I've had some experience through HOA, and the kind of software that they use to do this is not real complicated. They go out and take a picture of the area that you're going to landscape, and they plop in trees and things, and it's all done pretty much computer and then a little bit of photoshopping, that's it. So even if that source wouldn't work, I can, I might be able to direct them to a couple other sources.
Well, I talked to Councilman O'Flynn about this. You're absolutely correct, Councilman Forbes. There are some software that can do that. However, what we had discussed was an actual rendering, which is hand drawn.
I'm okay with that. I just want to get a sense of what it looks like.
We can certainly, you know, we can certainly look into that aspect and keep the cost down to a minimum. The product won't be quite what maybe some of the sitting council folks have seen. It'll be a little, a little bit different.
What I was saying to Matt today was that if you were spending $200,000 on your house for landscaping, you'd expect to have a sense of what it looks like, that's all.
There's, I believe there's been a motion and a second to delay two weeks. Do we want to take a roll call on that and then we'll, well, let's roll call on that motion?
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slakdo?
No.
Okay. Is there another motion? Matt, do you have further?
No, I just didn't know, sir, if you needed me anymore.
Oh, no. You're good.
Thank you.
I'd make the motion to go ahead with it now and still do the computer rendering. That way we can see it, and if any adjustments need to be made, they can be made.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakdo?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, great. The motion passes. Okay, moving along, we're back on to public comment. Anybody with public comment at this time, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Bob Hilliard, proud citizen of Benita Springs, also proud to be a lion in Benita Springs with Benita Springs Lions Club. Want to welcome all the new members and hope that you will support our Lions Club. Just an update, this year our Saturday market lost about $3,200 because we didn't, there were two things. Number one, the construction on all 41, but number two, the market over at the promenade went from a green market to a anything goes market. I'd like to get your support in requesting that the ladies have a market at the promenade any day but Saturday. For over 42 years, the Lions Club in Benita Springs has held a Saturday market. It's been one of our major fundraisers. Two years ago, we made almost $90,000 that we gave every penny back to the community. This year, we're losing money. We need your support to make our Saturday market successful again. Thank you.
Hello.
Bear with me just a sec. I think we're good, actually. Go ahead. Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. I'm Bobby Byrd. I live in Benita Springs, and I just wanted to point out to you, I'm on the special events committee. You all have t-shirts just like this. We want you to, we'd like you all to wear them in support of Celebrate Benita. It's this coming Saturday. We hope to see you all there and have you all participate with us. It's a great event, and we welcome all of you to participate. Come to any of our committee meetings and show up on Saturday. It's a great time. It is a marvelous event. We have great entertainers, local and from Nashville, and it's one of our premier events. It's really one of the events that makes the city of Benita unique to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Hello.
Hi, Kathy, how are you?
I'm Kathy McGrath. I'm on the special events committee, and the first thing I'd like to say is I think there's been a case of musical chairs or something since the last two weeks. Congratulations. But anyway...
I moved to the right.
Yeah, no, that's a big...
Which is typical.
What I would like to...
Sorry.
Add to this, and those of you who have not sat on council, I've said this many times, Bobby and myself and the rest on the committee, we can all say the same thing. We're the ones that hear the comments, and what we hear all the time is, isn't it wonderful that we have this beautiful location and a free event that everyone in the family can enjoy? And I tell them, don't thank me, thank your council people. And remember, and we will remind you when budget time comes again, please. And I guess I better wait with my other comments until later. How's that?
Why don't you go ahead?
Oh, may I? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. I've been a property owner for almost 50 years here, and I've lived here almost 34 years, and I'm a big supporter of Benita Springs Utilities. That's number one, yes. And I just wanted to remind everyone that they were just awarded by the Florida Section of the American Water Works Association. They were a winner of the 2015 Division Four Outstanding Water Distribution Award for the fifth time in seven years. It recognizes excellence in water quality, operations records, maintenance, professionalism, safety, emergency procedures, and all. They've always been ahead of the thing. Bob and I were signed up in 1970 when they were looking for members. We were charter members, and they have really, really grown. And they've looked out, they have planned, because Bob was on the board from '86 until his death seven years ago. They've always, always planned ahead. And remember, folks, the days of sticking a pipe in the ground and pumping water out are long gone. They're going down 1,000 feet now. And in fact, they just drilled three new wells. They announced it at the annual meeting. One is already operating, and the water is treated by reverse osmosis. South Florida Water Management, Phil Flood was here, they continue to buy property, the Crew Trust, our water is in good hands, so. Anyway, and the other thing I wanted to address was the discussion about the deputies on the water. I'm on the water, I'm also on the Waterways Advisory Committee. And our big thing will be on April 28th when we prioritize the things. And as Arlene kind of told you, it used to be, actually, we upped the percentage. It used to be only 25% of their money could go towards law enforcement. They've upped it now to 28%, and every year, as Arlene will tell you, everyone has to give a little. So I think if you don't think it's sufficient, you might have to look at budgeting more, if you get complaints that, you know, that you need more people. But anyway, thanks for allowing me to keep...
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathy, for all you do.
Good luck, you know. And I will keep coming, and I'll keep trying to fatten you up.
Thank you, Kathy. Ron, how are you?
Hi, congratulations, everybody, all the newbies. Ron Pure, Benita Springs. I think we've seen in the recent past that the concept of building a new high school in the city has run into a few snags along the way. 13 or 15 properties have been offered up to us as being possibilities as far as building a new school. And I don't want to, I don't want to get overly wordy here, let me get to the point. I think we'll send to the Board of Education this year $70 million or thereabouts. We've got about five, I think, five public schools in the city, our city at this point. And I think we've waited a long time to at least focus on one property that'll do the job, and I think the Board of Education got off to a bad start by offering vacant properties that are way, way out of the nucleus of where the students are, the kids are. We're getting a little bit closer, but that remains to be seen what will be the ultimate conclusion. My point is, I think we are of the size now to have our own Board of Education, and if not doable because statutes would prohibit it, maybe it's something that we should look into with respect to having a board of some sort, voluntary or elected, if we can establish our own Board of Education. And I think you guys are day one, and I think it's a good time to start with that endeavor because we are a city that has boomed. We will probably, hopefully, slow that process down, the boom process, but we will continue to grow. And again, we've already got a number of buildings in the area that provide kids with an education, and I think that there's no one that would have a better sense of what we are as a city than those parents and people that live in our city to guide what goes on with respect to education. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will make an effort to do something along these lines. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Linda Schwartz, welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Linda Schwartz, thank you all for your public service, and congratulations to those of you who are new to your positions. I want to comment, I want to echo earlier comments about the BSU liaison. I think we need a BSU liaison now more than ever. I think that Fred Forbes would be ideally suited for that position, given his engineering background, the fact that BSU is in his district, and the fact that he knows hydrology and participated in the recent Water Strategy Task Force. I know that could be a large assignment. I'd like to see someone going to those meetings on a regular basis and keeping council and residents informed. The other agenda item I wanted to speak on is the strategic planning agreement. I would like to see at least two, if not three, four-hour sessions to give residents and council members a chance to participate and also to process information. I agree that public comments can be limited as they are in the council meetings, but I'd like to see council members have the opportunity to really express their views and those of their constituents without being bound by any particular process or even budgetary constraints. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Anybody else with public comment? Please come forward.
I'm public.
Good evening, Pete.
Good evening, sir. My name is Pete Pastore. I just want to congratulate Districts 1, 2, 4, and 6 as your new members and take some guidance from the, from 3 and 5. And you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Pete.
You just progressed.
Further public comment? Good evening, Grant.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Grant Lundberg, and I live in Benita Springs, and I'm in the District of District 4. Congratulations. Congratulations to all your new members on the board and the city council. And I'm just here a few little comments that where I live and where I work, we have a lot of comments. We will help you people vote on putting that school down on Imperial Parkway, and Terry, if you help us get the golf course, thank you.
Not sure that'll be tie barred, Grant.
That sounds like a trade-off. That's a good trade-off. Thank you for moving along. Yeah, it was the sausage tree, the silk floss tree, the detour trumpet tree. Yeah, those aren't good. Anyway, thanks for moving that along. Yeah, I think you can, I'll send you pictures of all those trees and, you know, whatever. I also want to thank Matt Feeney. Is he out of the building now? For three and a half years, there's been a light on in my neighborhood that I've been calling FPL about saying, "Would you turn out the darn light?" It's a street light. It's been burning for three and a half years. And occasionally, like maybe over six months, Matt Feeney took out his magic wand, and Elaine Blaney, who's also on our street lighting committee, somehow took out the magic wand, and the light was out on the way to this meeting. That's like a major accomplishment. Matt Feeney also told me there might be somebody in Village Walk who's a past public commission, you know, public service commission person. If you can find out who that is, Councilman Forbes, I'd like to know, because I'm going to take a page book out of the Rick Steimeyer page of local street management, and that is, "Let's get these old telephone poles off of Benita Beach Road again." They just put on new telephone poles, or what, we call them telephone light poles, whatever, utility poles. And I had talked to Randy, thanks to the patient words from our city attorney, who's in charge of Lee DOT, because there are, Randy's searching, there are horrible management problems with the cables and the wires and the signalization power lines along Benita Beach Road. Looks really bad. And so I called, he wrote me back, goes, "We fixed it. We fixed it." They took piece of like crime tape and tied it up. I'm like, "This is not fixed." So whatever powers you have in your magical new city council bag and mayorship, please help apply it to making our utility lines better around town and get those ugly poles out of here. Thank you, Matt Feeney. Your blessing.
Thank you, Martha.
You are too.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council, I'd like to congratulate you all. My name's Alan Glazier. I'd like to bring up a situation that we had with the Blues Festival, kind of to consider it as to future events. I know we have the Celebrate Benita one coming up, and I've been assured that there's no problem as far as parking is concerned, but on the Banning Tree property, I'd like to make sure that that property is not abused in the future again as far as because there was parking all around the tree, up against the tree, and like that. And then also, I'd like to suggest that we consider something for that property as far as a park's concerned, because when we were kids growing up here, we had parasils, swing sets, all kinds of things that were really family friendly, and we enjoyed the tree. And I understand that maybe the liability's not allowed to use a tree anymore. I don't like that, and I wish we could do something about that. Without even, I'm sorry, Sour Grape say, I wouldn't want the city again if I knew that was going to happen, but I know that that's not, but if there was something that we could do as far as some kind of insurance or something, that would just say that my grandchildren could climb that tree or other people. But anyways, I'd love to see that property there as a park in the future, and just a suggestion on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan. Any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment? City Attorney's report. Audrey?
Thank you, sir. The first item is just the housekeeping. I've done once a year, and it's just being consistent with the code of conduct, making sure that you remember to turn in your receipts, and I made an extra copy in your packet, but there was one sent by a memo, and I have extra copies of the little document I provided to turn into the city clerk. And that's just to let you know that you got those documents, once again, the code of conduct. And I did put one in everybody's box about a month ago. And then I do want to thank council members Karumba, DeWitt, Flynn, and Forbes for meeting with me and going over the different laws that you need to think about as local government. If anybody else wants a refresher, feel free to come see me. The second item that I'd like to bring up is regarding hiring Chris Donovan for Russell and Andrews. I did send you all a copy of the motion to dismiss. The lawyers for Cardo sent a letter ex parte unilaterally to the judge with a copy of the order, and the judge signed it immediately, which gave us much less time, so unfortunately we did have to act to not be time barred ourselves before the hearing. I thought I heard Mr. Levine talk about Saturday, and if you do look at the motion to dismiss, the word "Saturday" is not in there. I think that might be the word statutory. The motion to dismiss is on two bases. One is one that I have brought up to you time and time again, that I thought the Fludra hearing should not have even proceeded. It was time barred. The second reason for the motion to dismiss is probably what I consider more intellectual than things I think about, and that is the fact that you have the Florida Legislature putting in time elements for review and appeal, which is something under the purview of the Supreme Court. So it's a matter of checks and balances. Florida Rules of Procedures is not prepared by legislatures, it's prepared by the court system. So that is our second reason, that we believe that the Circuit Court does not have jurisdiction of this matter, and we did have to respond a little earlier. If you have questions, ask about Mr. Donovan's ability, or we've hired him before, he was the one who helped us or assisted us with the Burnwood site with the homeless shelter issue previously when we had a writ of mandamus. Otherwise, I'm proceeding forward unless council tells me otherwise.
Okay. Counsel? Comments? Okay. Audrey, is that all?
No, the next, thank you. That's just for that item. The next item is, as you know, the city is also party to a lawsuit that's entitled Carter-Pritchard Advertising versus City of Benita Springs. It's Lee County Circuit Court Case Number 15CA000390. Pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.11 Subsection 8, I'm requesting that City Council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss litigation and settlement strategies. This session will be scheduled for Wednesday, April 20th, 2016, at 11:00 a.m. or immediately following your City Council meeting on that particular date. Counsel, I did instruct the clerk to prepare a notice for the special meeting. We do want to do it the same day, and that meeting will be a very limited meeting. Nobody is allowed in that meeting, aside from City Council, the city manager, myself, and Special Counsel Michael Burke. The mayor will have some duties, and we will explain that during the course of the meeting, and it will be taken by a court reporter. We can only discuss that one subject matter, which will be that particular lawsuit, and we will have it transcribed, so once the litigation is concluded, we will then make that public record. The next item will be handled by Mr. Boswell-Ebersole.
Good evening. Alex Boswell-Ebersole, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. This item is an item seeking... This item is an item seeking permission to advertise an ordinance amending the land development code by adding a section to the code prohibiting certain architectural lighting associated with commercial developments in buildings. If council does grant permission to proceed, the ordinance will be scheduled for land planning agency review April 14 of this year, a first reading in front of you, council, on April 20 of this year, and then a second reading on May 4 of this year. In order to allow you to visualize the type of lighting that this ordinance would prohibit, we have a few photos on a PowerPoint presentation that our community development department put together for you.
Thank you, Fred.
There's just a couple photos. I'll show you. This one's supposed to move. There you go.
Now, we're talking about the lights around the entrance frame, not about the words scrolling across.
Correct. So there you go. That's the proposed ordinance.
Counsel, discussion?
Move to approve.
Yeah, any further, any discussion? You have Mike.
I just want to make sure that it's not going to prohibit any lighting of like a window display.
Yeah, there's exceptions to like.
I know we're trying to solely prohibit that, but I just want to make sure it's not going to inadvertently, you know, prohibit other things.
Right, and there's certain exceptions to the ordinance, to things like displays and holiday lighting and other types of lighting.
Okay, so it does say "display lighting" in there? When I read it, it just sounded like it says "lighting position to immediately adjacent to any window as to illuminate the window and/or emit light beyond the building." And I thought that the "and/or" kind of would prohibit having a display, you know, a window display that had a light just lighting up inside the building, that display.
No, that's, it's intended to apply to light that would go, however, beyond the property itself, so the actual light is, it can be visualized beyond the property itself. And so, I know we have Jay Sweet with Community Development here. I don't know if he has any technical.
Enlighten us, Jay.
Sure. For the record, Jay Sweet with Community Development. What we've noticed is there's a trend. We've had one or two here, but we've noticed in a lot of the communities, for whatever reason, the trend right now seems to be the phone companies, the cell phone companies, and they all put these bright lights out there, and they're a hazard in a lot of ways for drivers. They're distracting. And what we looked at is, in our ordinance right now, we ban lining the building with like neon. Well, this is another version of using LED, using very intense lights. As far as window displays, we already limit window space to 30% of the glazed area currently in the code, and that would stay the same as it is. This is to prevent them from either going right inside the window frame or mostly on the outside of the building and having these lights project light off the property, which is the problem. And of course, you know, it takes away from architectural features of the building, what you're trying to create, especially worried about the downtown areas we redevelop. We don't want this someone to take, you know, we're trying to create that certain atmosphere and then to blow it up, basically.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's not going to prohibit if somebody had a display just inside their window and had a light inside the window on the display, aiming away from outside, of course, you know, aiming back.
Right. And the way that the code is currently written, that wouldn't be a problem. It is limited to 30% of the window area, and that is a problem that we're constantly battling with, and I'm sure that Neighborhood Services can tell you about that, where people are putting posters and other displays in the window. We do have a limit for the glazing for a lot of reasons, including public safety, but it wouldn't be, what you're concerned with, I don't think is going to be affected by this.
Fred?
Well, I will vote for this, but I would like to say that I think unless we have an emergency, we should stop advertising before LPA does their thing. This has gone on for a long time, and just, but I don't see that any of this is that big of an emergency that doing it sequentially wouldn't be okay.
Pete, did you have something to say?
No.
No?
I'd like to see what Audrey says about that.
Audrey?
Yes, if I may, for process, we don't like to take anything to the LPA until we know that council is okay with the subject matter even being advertised. We could put in some additional timeframe in here if you wish, so that local planning agency gets to see it, and then we postpone it to May 4 and the May 18 hearing, and that would give us, if there's an adverse, it would give us time on April 20 to bring the ordinance back to council, saying LPA did not like it. What do you want to do? Go forward, not forward? But I certainly would think you need to see anything we work first on before we take it to LPA.
So what you're saying is this is just a topic, setting that up as a topic in effect?
Well, again, it's something that we want council before we start expending resources, whether it's staff, whether it's the LPA resources, or the money that goes into the advertisement. We want council first to go forward. Now, the LPA, we still can go forward regardless of what the LPA's recommendation is, and normally I do their recommendation concurrent between your hearings. One of the problems is if you take things to the LPA too early, sometimes you readjust an ordinance so much, it's dramatically different than what the LPA has seen, but the law does not require it to go back to the LPA, and depending on the time sensitivity of the subject matter, and again, I mentioned homeless shelters earlier, that was an example of something that had extensive changes after the LPA worked on it, and the LPA did produce that ordinance and did do a lot of significant work, but it didn't go back to the LPA. So, I mean, we will be happy to postpone this ordinance to give additional time if that would make Councilmember Forbes happy.
No, actually, I said I'd vote for this. My idea would be a couple things. We could look at the draft of what would go to LPA without approving a motion to advertise. That way, LPA is not boxed in that they've got to do something within a specific meeting. I remind you that the same process is used for con-plan amendments, all kinds of things, and it upgrades the land development code. I really think that unless there's an emergency, why not take a little more time?
And we can put additional time in.
Yeah, I might say if, I think what I hear Fred saying is just sequence it, I don't think he's disputing this.
No, I think.
But I hear, right, but I hear him, if what I hear him saying is just sequence it so that it first goes to the LPA before it comes back to City Council, I think that makes.
For the first and second.
Exactly. I think it makes all the sense in the world, if that's what he's saying.
And advertisements.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Carl? Yes, please.
So I just want to reiterate that we do not want to be spending staff time on an item that the council is not interested in pursuing at all. And so, that's the only reason we bring these forward as ideas, if you will, so that we get an idea from council that, yes, you're willing to entertain it, but obviously having to go through the process with LPA, and then back to council for public hearings and an adoption of an ordinance or a modified ordinance, whatever. And so, and Audrey has said all this, I just want to make sure the council's clear that, again, we don't, we bring these forward as ideas. If the council's not interested, we don't even want to go to LPA, because that's going to be a lot of work and time and involving volunteers of the city for really no reason if the council's not interested in at least considering it in the future.
If I might add, I like the idea that we see a draft of what's going to go to LPA for discussion, but we don't have to, at that meeting, do the advertisement. That takes away putting everybody in a corner in a time crunch.
I think also, though, with the timeframe, the staff has to abide by some timeframes before it comes back to us, so I think that's why they get the motion now, that if we're interested in it, to go ahead with drawing it up and then advertising it, then we can send it to LPA. Like the city attorney said, it can be later on to give LPA time to look at it, but I think it's procedural to bring it to us to see, are we interested in it? Have staff do their due diligence, write it up, draft it, maybe at that point, send it to LPA and advertise a date into the future after we've talked about it, LPA's seen it, we get their result, and we want to go forward or not go forward.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, except we don't advertise it when we first see it. We look at it, and if it looks good, it goes to LPA. They do their thing, and then we advertise it.
So I would take it first for council to conceptually review and approve an ordinance to go through the process. LPA would then review the ordinance, then I would schedule it for permission to advertise after LPA has already given a go-ahead on that particular ordinance, and we would tell you the tentative dates in that ordinance.
Counsel, further discussion? Fred, do you want to make a mo, no, no further discussion?
Yeah, before I make the motion, I would say, I know a lot of our residents would prefer this kind of a process, so I would make the motion, we simply, any type of amendment to con plans or LDC or anything else would come here in a draft, we would review, comment, and then it goes back once approved to LPA. When they do their process, then we advertise it.
Did you get that, Audrey? Carl?
I did, and what I might do is prepare a chart for council so that you can see, so we have a timeline, so you see the new pro, I mean, and it's not a problem, we can do this, so that we have a process defined, so people have an understanding. I mean, it will add an extra month or so to ordinance adoption, but if council's okay. Now, if we have a moratorium, I may ask to not follow that process if we're under a limited timeframe.
Or as Fred said, if it's an emergency, obviously.
Right.
If we have a real emergency.
Well, if we have a real emergency, I can't do land development by that, but I could do something in the interim until I do the land development.
Okay, there's a further discussion?
I guess we'll wait for a second, then.
Yeah, there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I just wonder, Audrey, is there a process now that we do, so is this going to change a process that we currently do, or is this just a loose thing that we do?
I would like to say it's interesting, because you could have the LP, and I've been in a government, not this one, where the LPA would review something, and six months later, it would go to the elected officials, eight months later, and nobody would remember what the review was by the time it went forward. So you could do, I mean, especially with con-plan amendments, that could occur, and sometimes things get time barred, it gets stale. Once it gets stale, it doesn't get put onto a docket. So it's more of a docket control issue, but the statute requires that the local planning agency, and it's a statute requirement when it's a land development regulation, review an ordinance, but it doesn't say set forth when the timing for the review is. So we could modify that timing to give additional time so that the LPA doesn't feel rushed.
Okay. And I apologize, this is a learning curve for, I know, for me for being up here. The other question I have is if we mention this right now, we've mentioned this about the lighting, could somebody, and I guess this is Mr. Sweet, could somebody come in and install this lighting and get in under the wire at this point if we wait another month and a half, two months for this to go to LPA and all this?
The immediate answer is yes, but one of the things we have in the ordinance proposed also is that everybody's got to comply within nine, within 60 days. I believe we changed it to 60. So that even those who already have it are going to have to come back into compliance and meet this ordinance, so we will get rid of, but the immediate answer is yes, someone could come in tomorrow, get a permit, couldn't prevent it. We would discourage you, but we couldn't.
The ordinance that you're recommending right now, though, if someone has it currently today, it will have to be brought up to code.
Sixty days after the adoption of the ordinance.
But if somebody tried to race us to the clock, we could always invoke Smith v. Clearwater, but even if we didn't invoke Smith v. Clearwater, which Smith v. Clearwater is the second DCAK, so I can give you more later, I don't want to bore everybody, but we could invoke that, and while invoking it, say, you know, you're trying to race us to the clock, but it's really, doesn't matter, because this ordinance has such a short amortization period.
Further discussion?
Yes, Fred?
Only thing I want to say is, I said we would then pass a motion to do what Audrey wants on this.
Well, why don't we vote on the motion?
Right.
On, on, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Hold on one second, please. What are we voting on?
What motion are we voting on?
Are we voting on the motion to change the policy, or are we voting on the motion to go ahead?
Policy first.
And as I understand the policy, what staff will do in the future is bring to you a draft ordinance for conceptual review, after which, if council goes forward with that, it'll then go to the local planning agency. After that, we will bring it back to you for permission to advertise, and finally, once you give permission to advertise, we'll have it in the agenda, the tentative dates for approval. Now, if you want to make that the first motion, then the second motion that I understood Councilmember Forbes to make was to go forward with the dates as scheduled for this particular ordinance, these dates.
Let's vote on that order. Okay?
Aye.
Well, roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Nay.
Councilman Slata?
No.
Councilman Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Passes. Would you do it for me?
Then I would make a motion to approve Audrey's modification or amendment to the land development code on lighting.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Discussion?
Well, here's my question. Since we just approved this one, is it under the new policy then, since we've already approved it?
No.
No.
In the future, I will do this for the next land development regulation, and it's only for land development regulations. Other regulations do not go to the LPA. Now, it could be for additional issues we have before the LPA, but I normally don't schedule those before the LPA.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slata?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, anything else this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to City Managers' report. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I've got a few items this evening. First off, on your agenda, Item A is the review of the preliminary budget calendar. We have been in a situation in the past where we've held the budget workshop late in July. It has prevented at least once council member in the past from attending because of other plans, and so what we're trying to do is bring this forward to you early, so you can see the dates. They've been adjusted. The ones to call your attention to on the budget calendar, July 6, you would receive your budget packets from the staff with my signature on it, and then July 13, we're recommending the City Council budget meeting. This would be a workshop, and it can go as long in that day or into multiple days as you wish. And then, the other three yellow highlighted items are August 17, in case you have follow-up discussions at a regular council meeting. September 7 would be the tentative budget hearing before a regular council meeting, and then the final budget hearing on September 22. And I will tell you, the September meetings are pretty tight, they're almost mandatory, and they're also mandatory that we hold them at particular times on dates other than other entities, and also at particular times.
Do it a Saturday.
So bottom line is, just want to make sure that you're comfortable with, especially the July 13 budget workshop proposal, and I'd recommend that that would be at 9:00 in the morning here in council chambers, and we would go through the budget in whatever detail council wishes. Everybody comfortable with that date?
Counsel, discussion? Thoughts, ideas? Okay?
Good. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Carl.
All right. Second item really takes no action tonight, and it's been discussed already tonight a lot, and that is the next item, which is the committee assignment sheet. I passed out an old one to you as an example at the orientation. Tonight, I've presented you two pages. One of them, the second one, is the current committee list, and it's got everything on it that we've always had. And then the first page in front of you is one where we have grouped them to internal city committees that are appointed by council. You have volunteers on that, and council normally has a liaison to that. Then there's external committees or groups where there's a council appointment, and then there's a number of ones that have been on the list for years and years, but really just our idea, it's a suggestion to council, you can do whatever you wish, of course. our idea, it's a suggestion to council, you can do whatever you wish, of course, is that you consider removing some of these, because they're really not committees, they're functions that really the entire council and staff are responsible for, in our opinion. Now, we understand that there's been concern about BSU, and of course, whatever council would like to do about that is certainly up to council, and we're making a recommendation on the proposed committee list, and we're going to present this tonight for your information, whatever you'd like to do with it. On April 20th is fine, because at that point in time, we're going to ask you to make your appointments to these various committees. In between time, we will submit you additional information with regards to what actually these committees are, what they do functionally, and typically, where they meet and when they meet, so that you've got that additional information, as you consider what committees you might be interested in serving on and being appointed to. All right? But no action required tonight.
Carl, do you want discussion about the recommendations for removal tonight?
Absolutely. Whatever council wants to do that, absolutely.
So I might say, I hear what you're saying, makes a lot of sense, although I am hearing the concern about BSU, so why did you suggest taking that out?
Well, BSU is a unique external entity, they're a partner of ours, of course, as you know, but they are also a private organization. So you can have, you can assign either one of yourselves, or a staff member will happy to go if you want us to sit in the meetings, but understand that there is, there are public meetings, and then they have executive or closed meetings, that are not open to the public, and it's not like the city's going to be able to sit in on those. Those are for executive staff of BSU, and for the BSU board themselves. And so, in terms of anything technical, you might, and of course, Mary's here, she's always here, can straighten me out on this, but I don't know how much we're going to gain from sitting in on those meetings, as much as Mary gains from sitting in in ours, because everything we do is open. So, but again, they're a partner of ours, we're in regular contact with their staff, but again, if you feel an appointment to BSU, or any of these other things are appropriate, that's fine with us, we're just making a recommendation.
I would suggest adding BSU back, and see what happens if somebody puts their hand up next time.
Okay.
Any objection? We don't need to vote on that, no?
I have no problem. It's consensus of council. All right, we'll add BSU back in.
And the other quick one is sustainability?
Yes.
You can talk to that. Why you had suggested taking that out?
Sustainability is a program, it is a policy of the city. There's really, I mean, unless you need, like to have a particular council member kind of riding herd on that, or monitoring staff activity on that, that's fine, but again, sustainability has typically been, it obviously was driven by Councilmember McIntosh in the previous administration, but again, staff typically executes those things, and brings to council recommendations for changes in policies. Again, it's not really, it's not a committee, it's a formula, it's a po— it's a, not a formula, but it's a policy, and it's a function, if you will. It's a goal, if you will. So it's really, I don't know that council member appointment is appropriate, but again, that's up to council.
But this is not a statement about commitment, we are committed to it, it's just a statement about process.
Absolutely, and I will tell you that the award we received tonight, timely enough, is an indication of how committed this council has been, as well as the staff, in moving sustainability as a quality of life issue in the city of Benita Springs forward.
Okay. Great, further discussion? Steve?
Yeah, I would agree with what Carl has to say, I don't think we need anybody to serve and or monitor this city staff, I think they're self-motivated, and they know what we want.
Further discussion, Fred?
Well, two, one on the sustainability, I think that, as Carl has proposed, is fine, but I think we should be almost updated quarterly, because, just my own opinion, I think that we could do more than we have, not necessarily we're going to get a platinum, but I think we need to make sure that we really are doing the things that the policies say we're behind. And I think by having quarterly updates, or maybe three times a year, even semi-annually, we could get into it and hold council with your. Now, last question I have is, are we supposed to submit our, what committees we want to the mayor, and he's going to kind of—
Carl, do you want to address that?
Yes, sir. What has typically happened is that the council takes a look at the list, it'll be at the next meeting, and council members who have served in various capacities, and in this particular case, it would be either the mayor, or Councilmember Slakta, Councilmember Gibson, who have already served on committees, who wish to continue in those capacities, will typically recommend that they want to be appointed by council to do that ongoing, or if they haven't, and then for all of you, whether you have a particular interest in being appointed to a particular position. I will tell you that basically, what my experience has been in watching the council over time, is that normally, the council's thrilled if somebody volunteers to take one of these, okay? But there's also times when you've got a few of them that are interested in one particular issue, transportation, or whatever it might be. So, but, and at that point, the council is going to have to make a decision between two or three of you, but usually, it's a volunteer-type thing, based upon your interest in a particular topic.
Great, great. Thank you, Carl. Other items, Carl? Anything else?
So, all right, just to go back, so I want to make sure, so the proposed new list is approved, with the exception of adding BSU under the external committees, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Great, happy to do that, thank you. All right, another item I have is the strategic plan. This was discussed briefly at the orientation meeting. You have in front of you a proposal from Dr. Bob Lee of FGCU, who is proposing to do pre-meeting preparation, to take the council through a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, to work on, with the council, visions, missions, and values. And you already have these in place, by the way, you might tweak them, or you might rewrite them, whatever you want to do. And then, the last, and certainly, most importantly, is to make sure that we get the objectives down in a prioritized manner, so that staff clearly understands, number one, what's important to the council, most important to the council, and also assists us in able to funnel additional city resources to those areas of response, or priorities of the council. So, it's an important meeting, but there's a number of different ways to do it, and I'm sure that Dr. Lee would be interested in doing whatever way the council feels most comfortable about proceeding with the strategic plan. Again, as long as we come out with whatever you feel is comfortable for you, in clearly identifying to the public and to the staff, as to what's important to the council.
Counsel, discussion? Fred?
Well, I'd like to make a proposal that is a little bit slightly different than what's on the green sheet. I think what would be great is if we could have the four-hour sessions, probably three is what's going to take, but the very first session, instead of getting all wrapped up with the SWOT analysis and all that first, let us have a free-flowing, where everybody is able to talk about what they feel are their goals, their strategies, that they would like to see us adopt. Then, I think the moderator and staff can kind of take and bundle those up, and then put it into something more structured for the second one. I think it's real important that everybody here, especially the new people, have an opportunity to give their thoughts, without being kind of constrained by the way we're going to do it, and I think one thing we want to do is first come up with ideas independent of the budget, because if you always are constrained by the budget, you'll never grow.
Counsel, further discussion? Amy?
I'm in favor of having a more freewheeling approach, at least for part of the session. Being very new, both to the governmental process and on the council, it would be very helpful to me, and right now, I can't imagine how we're going to work within the sunshine laws, to have a dialogue among the council people, and I would like to have, at least initiate that forum, so we can talk about whatever we feel like talking about at that time.
Okay, great. Greg?
I just had a quick question for Carl, from what Councilman Forbes said, if we go to three days, is that going to affect the price?
Yes, it will. We have not talked about three days. Typically, this typical process is an eight-hour process, but that assumes you take, you do all the steps, all right? Now, I will suggest that you, a number of you are hot off the campaign trail, so my guess is, you know the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats of the city, as well as the council members who have been seated for four years. But I will suggest to you that, in my opinion, okay, now you've got to remember, in past times, in 12 and in 14, I facilitated these discussions, and we got everything done, including the SWOT analysis, in four or five hours, all right? Now, we were running through it, it was not freewheeling discussion, I understand the council's interested in that. What I might suggest, to try to take everyone's concerns into play here, is that we do one session, half-day, where it's just us, all right? We don't even bring the facilitator in for that, because you all have concerns, you have issues, there'll probably be things that staff would like to bring up. Hey, we're doing this, do you still want to continue doing that? That would be helpful for us. So if you'd like to do that for half a day, and then have a second day where you bring the facilitator in, and maybe you cut out the SWOT analysis, and you go straight to vision, mission, values, and objectives, that we believe can be done in four hours, you will have had your first day, four hours, everyone's freewheeling, talking about whatever you want, which is probably going to help the discussion on the second day. And that, if we do one four-hour day, I think that'll actually reduce the price of the facilitator, and I'm just suggesting that as an option for council, given what I've heard tonight.
Thoughts on that, counsel? I guess I'll just start this off, I like that approach, but I'd like to hear what council thinks about that. We'll start down at the end. Fred?
Well, the only thing I would like is that we have the opportunity first to throw out our ideas, before we hear the ideas that staff is wanting to know that we still want to do that, just to get that more, the freewheeling.
Sound good, Carl?
Absolutely, whatever council wants to do.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree, I've never been a fan of the whole SWOT thing, so.
Pete?
Yeah, I agree totally, I think it's a great idea that Carl has.
Steve?
Carl.
Greg?
With Carl, I just would like to make one suggestion, that we don't limit it to four hours, because if we need an extra two or three hours, and I'll make the motion after Amy gets done.
Yeah, that's what, again, however long you want to sit there, we were thrilled that you sat there for six hours at the orientation. Thank you very much for that, by the way.
As long as you have lunch, I'm—
Yeah, I was going to say, Amy, as long, Amy's in, as long as you're serving lunch, it sounds like—
We will always feed you, okay?
I'm very much supportive of your suggestions, it's a very good idea.
Thank you.
Great.
We will do that.
Great, any further discussion, counsel? Okay, on that, okay.
All right, so now we need to decide on some dates, that would be helpful. Now, we had proposed the dates of, I think, April, we were trying to get it done in April, and we had proposed some dates, I believe, as soon as April 11th, which I believe would be as soon as Monday, I think. Now, again, these are the dates the facilitator could show up, so if we're going to do the first day, and it's just going to be us, we can choose whatever date the council feels comfortable with, where you want to spend four, five, six hours, whatever you want to do, kind of just talking about everything. But I will tell you that the facilitator is available on the 11th, and the 13th, and the 29th of April, for a half-day session, all right? And then you've got, he's available on Saturday, the 16th, which he can do a half or a full day, or on May 3rd, which is a Tuesday, and he can do either a half or a full day there as well.
Carl, I would start by saying, unfortunately, I'm not available 11, 13, or 16. I am available, I think Greg may be away, though, from what I heard last meeting.
On the 29th?
Oh, yeah, I'm available then, but I'm just playing with the idea that Carl said, we don't need the facilitator for the first meeting.
That's correct.
I would be available, I mean, I'll just start with the 18th to 22nd, as well.
Counsel, how does the week of 18, the week of the 18th look for everybody?
I think we have a council conflict.
No, I fly out late on the 19th, so 18th or 19th, I'm good.
Oh, okay.
I fly out late.
How are you looking for the 18th, everybody, for the first meeting, now, first meeting?
Well, I, I mean, could, as long as it's not 9:00 AM.
What time would you recommend?
Anytime after 11:00, I'm wide open.
Counsel's pleasure. I would recommend that you not do it at 5:30, okay?
No, no.
Because our experience has been, it's very tough to go a full day, and then start that meeting, all right?
What about 11:00 AM on the 18th? And I'm sorry about the little bit later start, but will that work for everybody, for our initial four-hour? No, Steve?
I've got to get home and see, I know the 16th, I can't do it, I'm in Port Blount of order.
The 18th, I'm sorry, am I mixing updates here?
We're talking, we're talking the 18th?
Let me check.
Monday, the 18th, at 11:00 AM.
Right.
Works for me.
And I'm assuming we'd have some kind of, like, a snack lunch?
April the 18th?
We're back to food again, Carl, what do you think?
For the record, counsel, we will always feed you, okay? For the record. All right, so 11:00 AM on the 18th, are we good?
Great.
And that will be your freewheeling session. You going to be able with that?
Right.
Stephen, you okay with that, sir?
I have to check when I get home, but at most, I think it's going to be all right.
Okay, awesome. Now, what about a date for the facilitator to come in?
Pete, or, not, anybody major conflicts that they want to throw out to start?
29th, everybody, how about the 29th?
Let's look at the 29th, counsel, how's it look?
That's, that's a Friday.
Actually, it's great for me, I'll just dive in, looks great for me.
Fine for me.
That is a Friday, Friday, the 29th?
Just a quick question on the Friday, the 29th, on the way it reads on the green sheets, only for a four-hour, correct?
Right. That's a four-hour session, that's correct. In my opinion, you will be able to handle, you will be able to handle the balance of your work, having done the first day, you'll be able to handle the balance of your work in four to five hours on the 29th.
Do we want to say 9:00 AM on the 29th, counsel? Is that good for everybody?
Yeah.
I'm out of town.
You're out of town?
I'm in FASD conference in West Palm.
And I have a problem on the 29th, also.
May 3rd?
May 3rd.
Let's look at—
May 3rd would be for a half-day, no, I'm sorry, that's potential of a full day, but you won't, shouldn't take you that long. How about May 3rd? Tuesday, the 3rd?
9:00?
I'm sorry, no, it's not, that's wrong.
I have something I can rearrange, it's, okay.
9:00?
On May 3rd? 9:00 AM on May 3rd, counsel, does that look good?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, and then, as far as public involvement, was the last piece of this puzzle, my experience has been that public comment for these types of things, that the council does the heavy lifting, and is involved in the process most intimately, and that public comment is taken at one or multiple times during your meetings. How would council like to address that? There's also other ways of doing it as well.
I think more than once would be good, I just recollect the last time, it was just at the beginning, and certain people had concerns, so, if we can make some room midway.
Sure.
Counsel, further discussion on that? Okay.
Everybody okay with counsel, or for public input, basically, multiple times during the meeting?
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
And does that include both days, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's great. Appreciate that, that's all I have for that item, unless counsel has something else about that.
Counsel?
Do you need a motion to—
I've got direction, I'm good, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, great, great, great. Go ahead, Carl, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so then, the next item I have is just kind of an update, as you'll recall, Lee County Manager Dejarle sent a letter dated February 24th about the city's input, potential input, on the county's CIP priorities. And at that time, that letter indicated that they were looking for input from all the cities in Lee County by March the 23rd. Uh, I sent an email to Roger indicating to him that because of we've got this transition, and the council was not gonna meet until April the 6th, that that was going to be an impossible deadline for us. Other cities had problems with the deadline as well, and so what the county has done instead, um, is that we are going to have a staff-to-staff meeting, um, all the cities, as well as the county, their staffs are gonna get together, and we're going to talk about the transportation priorities. Um, I know council will want to make sure that staff on your behalf is saying the right thing, and what I wanted to do tonight is just throw out some of the things that, at least, we sense are going to be priorities to the council. And unfortunately, 'cause I think this meeting's gonna happen within the next two weeks, I wanna make sure that this council is comfortable with us going forward with at least, basically three things. Transportation, alright? Well, well, let me, let me also say, by the way, that there's an update, and that is that, at their latest meeting, um, held just yesterday, um, there was some talk about pushing off the Benita Springs bridges, because it was not a health and safety issue right now, and they talked about trying to advance or expedite the Estero Boulevard, um, construction on, on Fort Myers Beach, because that is a significant concern for them, because the original timetable for that was like 10 years. So, they wanna try to move that forward. I don't think they've made that decision yet, I just want you to understand that they're already thinking a little differently than they did before. Three issues I see from the council, as we've sensed it, is number one, based on even consultant recommendations, that something has to be done with traffic congestion at 41 and Benita Beach Road, okay? Number two, that, um, council may want to fi, have some follow-up with regards to the recommendations that are gonna be coming on the Benita Beach Road Visioning Program. And then number three, that there's council interest in trying to pursue whatever comes out of the citywide connectivity study that's coming forward with regards to bicycles and pedestrians being able to move and being connected throughout the city. Those are the three items that we would certainly advance as opportunities for, hopefully, the county's participation, or at least prioritization, and I certainly would love to hear council's response to any of that, or all of that, or any additions.
I'll just start down at this, and Amy, thoughts on any of that?
All those points, I concur with, especially the intersection of 41 and Benita Beach Road, and I would like to incorporate the visioning study into some of the priorities there.
Greg?
I agree with Amy, uh, to incorporate that in the vision, in the strategic plan and the study that we're gonna do. My other question is, is how far off are they talking about pushing these bridges? 'Cause when I looked at the study, they were supposed to be constructed and done by 2020, I believe was the furthest one out. So, how far are they gonna push those out?
That, that has not been decided yet, sir. These were just discussions held at a Board of County Commissioners workshop, um, so there was nothing, staff would have to take a look at exactly what they might do, and bring back some type of official proposal. Yes, sir.
Steve?
I agree with both of them, nope.
Okay, move it. Pete?
Absolutely agree.
Mike?
Ditto.
Yeah, ditto.
Fred?
The only thing on the bridges, I, I think we should make it clear that we really don't want the bridges extra-laned, and if they do ever replace them, that there should be bikeway, walkways on the new bridges, and there should be provisions for people to fish off the bridges.
Right. And I guess, you know, and I agree with everything that's been said, and I guess I would just add, Carl, uh, with the visioning study, and we can certainly work through this, what, 'cause they're gonna come back with some recommendations, and then rather than cause five-alarm, you know, bells around the city, let's make it very, very clear to the public and to people that, that we're working through these recommendations, they're gonna come back with recommendations, and realize that we're gonna work through that. So, however we can communicate that, so that it's not a five-alarm fire at the beach, or the east end of town, or downtown, or, or whatever it is, um, we know in recent weeks that's been the case, so, just anything we can do to that end.
Absolutely, and I will, I will tell you that, um, Arlene's been working on that, uh, we're aware of the fires, uh, we're trying to put those out, obviously oughta get Greg's help on that, right?
For valid reasons and nonvalid reasons, right?
Well, and we're just gonna make some things clear, and as we put out the notifications for the consultants to come back, um, we're gonna make it very clear about a few things that got heard, that upset some people, that aren't gonna be the case, we'll make sure that's very clear, um, as we put out additional information for them coming back for the meetings.
Greg?
I did have one other comment, or, one, something that just popped in my head, I know, in attending council meetings, I know that the Parks and Recs are just talking about doing something around the New Pass area, Dog Beach, and creating with that. When we're thinking about what we're gonna do with New Pass Bridge, communicate that with the county also, that where we're not contradicting or doing something, that they wanna do something with the bridge, and they're gonna do something with the park at a later date.
Thank you, sir, we, we will certainly do that, absolutely. We have been in communication with the county over that project.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be a significant cost, but we're hoping mostly funded by, of the TDC, and not by the city, okay? But we'll be working with the county, yes.
Council, other thoughts?
I just called, when do you anticipate, uh, McMahon's gonna be back on the bike?
Um, I'll have to get that date for you, sir.
Okay. We did have the date for Tool coming back, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tool's coming back, May 18th.
And I think, let's blow the elephant out of the room, now that March 15th has come and gone, I think this process will move a lot smoother. Uh, Carl, anything else?
Um, I just have one, one last thing. Um, John Gucciardo has left, he's retired, and I just want to officially announce and introduce to our council and to our residents, uh, our new official Assistant City Manager, Arlene Hunter.
Woo-hoo! Arlene, anything, Arlene, where'd you go to high school?
Bishopboro High School.
Alright.
And then Florida State.
Yeah, and, right.
Um, I'm very excited about this new opportunity, um, I'm very humbled to be here, um, Carl and John are amazing mentors, and I'm really happy that I've, um, been able to grow here with the city for the past 10 years, and, um, and, uh, work my way to this, uh, very special position, and I'm very excited about all of the new faces, the familiar faces, and, um, the great things that are gonna be coming forward with us. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Arlene, thank you very much.
It's all right, Mayor, thank you very much.
Yes, uh, we, we would say welcome, but you've been with us for so long, so, welcome in your new official capacity, and John, thank you for your years of service. Okay, moving along, I guess we're going on to mayor and council member items now, and, um, we're gonna start with Fred Forbes, down here. Fred, you have, um...
Well, I have a couple, couple items, let's...
And we're gonna start with green sheet?
Um, yeah, the green sheet was the first one.
Okay, great.
That would be a review of the capital projects, and Carl has said that they would, if, if council would like us to do it, they would put together a, a review of the capital projects, but I would propose that until we can really go through these and discuss it, that staff would, uh, you know, follow a professional request, that we do not award any more contracts on any capital project until we can go through it, because there's probably, uh, close to a million dollars that's floating in. Doesn't mean that they're not gonna be done, but just a different council. The other thing is, the city does not have the financial reserves and resources it had, and we, we are gonna need money to fix what, uh, I think Peter O'Flynn calls it, the Manhattan Project, intersection of Route 41 and Benita Beach Road. We've gotta do something about that, and it's gonna take money to do it, and it can't be just some little Band-Aid fix. It'll be, it'll be expensive. We're gonna need money for it, so we need to look at all of these things, doesn't mean that they're not worthy of being done, but we have to weigh that and factor these other priorities.
Council, thoughts, discussion on that? Fred? Pete?
Yeah, I would, I think Fred's on to something, I mean, the other thing is, we, uh, when we had our initiation session with staff, which by the way was fabulous, uh, what staff did, um, one of the, one of the requests was to effect have a balance sheet item of what the reserves look like, um, on a more recent basis, and I think that would tie into what Fred is saying. So, we have an actual snapshot of what the general reserves are, what the impact fee reserves are, what the building fund reserves are, et cetera, um, and then understand what the possible commitments are, but I would underline what Fred said, it doesn't mean we're not gonna go forward with those, it's just to take stock and see where we are.
And, and I would hasten to add, I think we should, even though it never was really voted on, it was one of those things, it was brought up and no one objected to it, but I, I do, would not wanna see anything come forward to the council on unpaved roads until we can make this assessment, because there's still money in that line item, too.
Okay. Council, any other thoughts on that?
Okay. Fred, anything else?
Oh, one, one other thing, just a thought, and I'm, I'm asking kinda permission to kinda work on this a little bit with consensus of council. Uh, some of you, I know Mike Gibson, Peter O'Flynn and I, I believe Peter Simmons caught part of, some of you may have been involved in the big workshop that the mayor of Fort Myers put on, on the future of cities and all that. That was all videotaped, and there's some wonderful presentations, and I was hoping to organize something that would be maybe kind of a combination of the public and a workshop, we'd show some of these speeches, the video, and then have a freewheeling discussion on it.
Okay. Fred, anything else?
I think that's enough.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, could we get a vote on the, holding back on the contracts? 'Cause right now, staff is under direction to move their projects forward under the current budget. I'd just like a vote from council to direct staff to hold on those contracts, pending, pending review of council.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, there're motion?
Second.
Second? Uh, roll call. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, discussion.
I'd like to know which contracts we're talking about before we vote on it, I mean, I don't know which ones are out there that we're not gonna fund at this point.
Every, every capital line item, whether we're at the stage of hiring a consultant, whether we're at the stage that we've got the permits, whether we're at the stage we've got the bids, if we haven't signed a contract, we're gonna take a little time out to go through these, to prioritize those with respect to these other needs.
If we haven't signed a contract.
Right. If we have, if a contract's signed, we're not gonna cancel the contract, but if they haven't been, they can simply go on hold a bit.
So, you're saying to stall any future projects that the older city council has already put on their strategic plan and budgeted for this budget year?
That's absolutely correct, and that's only because of the fact that we have these priorities, if we don't deal with Route 41 of Benita Beach Road, we're all gonna kinda hear about it from our constituents. Doesn't mean that any of them are gonna be not done, but we need to really fully understand the financial assets that we have, and what we're looking at doing.
With all due respect, I think Route 41 and Beach Road was there when the last council was there, and it, they deemed it as not a priority based on these projects, especially with three of the seven being here, I think they made their decision.
Mm-hmm. Amy?
I'd like to get a better picture of what kind of, well, I understand the information you're asking for, but how long would it be, would it take to just get this spreadsheet, well, actually, this spreadsheet to us, and what kind of interaction you would want? I mean, is it gonna take us a month to get this out, or a couple of weeks, or?
You will have it before your next meeting.
Alright, so why don't we just postpone it until the next meeting, take a look at it, and we'll, we can at least know the projects that you're talking about, um, and I am very much, uh, in favor of understanding both the revenues that might be available to us to do the projects, and the projects themselves. I don't know enough about, I know I went over a little bit of this with Matt Feeny, what, you know, for about 20 minutes, and that's all I know about those capital improvement projects, so I'm not comfortable voting at, a long delay with this, but I, I understand where you're coming from, and I, for one, would like to know the interrelation between the costs and where the revenues are coming from, and what constraint it will place on us, because I, too, agree that, um, the intersection of 41 and, um, Benita Beach Road is something that should be a high priority. And if there's a lower priority on there, which we don't even know, because we're not quite aware of those projects, uh, we, I think, have an, an opportunity to reprioritize, which is, I think, what you're suggesting. But I would ask, uh, the manager to be certain that we could get this before us as quickly as possible, and I don't think two weeks will matter.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, further discussion?
I, I would only say if we're gonna do it by the, at the next council, I mean, we need to add, allow adequate time to really talk the thing over, because we're gonna talk about the 41 Benita Beach Road and those kinda related things, but that's fine.
Okay. Council, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Uh, just a clarification on what we're, uh, voting on right now. Are we putting everything on hold, or are we just saying that we want a list for next meeting?
Both. We're getting a list, and we're gonna put it, anything that's not a signed contract, we're not gonna execute until we at least go through this list, and then prioritize it within the council.
Further discussion before roll call? Just a quick question.
I mean, sure, Greg, go ahead.
Quick question, so that would be, I mean, theoretically, we voted on to continue with the, uh, beautification of the pond over here on the Royal, that's on hold, 'cause we don't have a signed contract.
Right.
Just clarification. That's what would be one of the projects that we're talking about now.
No, I, I, we voted on that tonight, so, just council did prioritize.
But we had, we, but you're right, we voted to continue, but we don't have a signed contract right now, and the motion is to do not do any stalled, any contracts that has not been signed.
Let me...
Fred, go ahead.
Let me withdraw my motion and say that we will put every, we will not sign any contracts other than the Royal Pond Project, until two weeks when we get this more detailed list and have a chance to reprioritize.
Okay, so you're, you're removing your original motion, do we need to vote on that?
I think as long as he withdraws it, and the second agrees, then it's withdrawn.
A second, then.
Okay. And now Fred, are you making a new motion?
The motion, I just, yeah, I'll restate it again, we would not award any contracts on any of the capital projects, other than dealing with Old 41, until two weeks, with the exception of the FDOT Royal Pond Landscaping.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Discussion.
Point of clarification, I'll give an example, um, we've been working for, I think, about two years on, uh, getting a conservation easement through, uh, the US Army Corps of Engineers and DEP for Benita Springs River Park, it is a capital improvement project, although it's a park, it's not a road, um, would that be, and we're very, very close to where we're able to present the conservation easement for approval by you, is that something I would not be able to schedule, even though we've worked with the Corps, and if we get a postponement, it might take another couple of years?
I can suggest, obviously, that's not an issue.
Okay, it's, it's okay if we bring, for example, if I have relocation agreements, things that we've worked on, I can bring it to you, council can always say no.
Yes.
But that way, we still can continue working forward and bringing you matters that do relate on city business.
I would think you guys, just be, just be practical, I mean, in other words, this is, he's talking about money and the budget and understanding where we are financially, and that's not what you're...
I'm talking more about conservation, oh, conservation easements, road, uh, acceptance issues, and things that we've worked on for several years.
Thank you, Audrey, Carl.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna clarify, too, that, uh, the timing here, we expect to have this information to you before your next regular council meeting. I'll also remind you that you've just set an April 18th freewheeling discussion, which you can talk about anything, we might be able to talk about this as well, so, hopefully we'll have that information for you, and timing-wise, it won't be an issue for that many contracts, and if there are, we can still bring them to you, and...
Yes.
Council can determine independently whether or not you wanna move one forward or not.
Great.
We understand.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Nay.
Councilman Slacta?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel member Gibson, I think, moving on to council member items.
I just want to welcome everybody up here, and that's really all I have to say tonight, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Pete?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that staff did a fabulous job two weeks ago. We had a seven-hour meeting. And the quality is, it can't be equaled of what we have throughout the organization. So thank you again for that. One other thought, and I did talk briefly to Audrey about this the other day, and Carl as well. I was struck, there was an article in the Fort Myers paper, the news press, January 31. And it had to do with the process issues we have on zoning. And it said, "Lee County and the city of Benita Springs are the only governments in the county that cut off the right of people who don't speak at a hearing examiner or board proceedings from speaking during county commission or city council consideration of zoning changes." Estero, Sanibel, Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, and Cape Coral have no such restrictions, according to a survey of local regulations by the news press. Obviously, we've had this as an issue recently in certain zoning matters. And my thought was to have Audrey go take a look and hopefully come away with a situation where we can have residents speak at zoning, but also not be foreclosed from speaking later at city council if they have not talked below. Plus, whatever else Audrey would find that would make sense from looking at other, what other jurisdictions have done, is my thought.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah. Thank you. Also, welcome to everybody on the dais. I just want to say that I celebrate Benita. Stop by and see Carl and I, and we'll probably have some refreshments for sale. Won't we, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all ahead.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Greg?
I just want to thank everybody in District Two who seen their way fit to elect me. I hope I represent them well and the city of Benita Springs well. And I'm glad to be here.
Great. Thank you. Amy?
I also would like to express my sincere appreciation for all who supported me in this campaign. I would also like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the campaign efforts of my opponents, who were certainly worthy opponents, and recognize their willingness to serve. I am honored to be serving as the District One representative. And I'd also like to thank staff for helping me to try to get up to speed. And they need to help me a lot more, but I appreciate all their efforts. And if we were allowed to talk to each other, I would have said the same thing that Peter O'Flynn said. But that's one of the three things I want to say. But first of all, I want to say that I'm introducing these topics because I'm not quite sure how we can communicate and have a dialogue between us. And this is just to throw them out. And if anybody agrees with this, at some time, I hope we can talk about this in open forum. The first is, I really am interested in transparency and outreach to our districts. And I've already initiated a process with our campaign director to try to connect with the neighborhoods within my district. And we're going to start a process either by written, or emails, or outreach to the different communities, so that I can get the Benita Springs message to them, and they can get their message to me. And if anybody has ideas about how we can do this effectively and to improve on our outreach, I would greatly appreciate it. Secondly, I personally am interested in reviewing all the annexation agreements as to policy procedures and particulars. I understand this may be of specific interest to me because of District One being a border district, so to speak. So Audrey was kind enough to inform me that I think the vast majority of annexation agreements are in District One, which is really fine, because I have a lot of work to do and you guys could relax. I really am interested in this, because I would like to evaluate how these, the specific provisions which are found in these annexation agreements reflect the comp plan and the city vision. And I'm curious about whether there are some implied policies that are included in certain aspects of this. So if you're, I could just pursue this with Audrey, or if you're interested in that, I'll be glad to review the nine annexation agreements that are in District One. And she's going to have to help me, or we could all do it together.
There's more than nine.
Is it nine? I thought you said nine.
First of all, it's almost equal, District Six and District One. But it depends on which type you're talking. If you talk about the individual households, the residency ones, where we entered into.
Well, we'll have to talk. I was, the ones that I'm looking at currently are the ones that are at, with the mine, with, obviously, Rapture Day, with some things that happened with Coconut Road, you know, that part. So there's at least three that I'm looking at, and she tells me there's a lot more. So when I get tired of doing that, I can look at some more things. And thirdly, because one of my important planks was one of good governments, and this is where I parallel what you're saying, Peter, I would like to explore the policies which are in place for citizen input for such things as zoning and comp plant changes. It is my understanding that there are other procedures that are in place in other municipalities for citizens' input. I'd like to review those other alternative ways of handling these requirements that we have and see if we could do it better, or whether we like what we have, and why do other people do it a different way. And again, as we've spoken specifically, when I was engaged in a zoning issue in a comp plant, I was not comfortable with what went on, maybe because I was somewhat inexperienced in that process. But I think we can make it better for the public. And I'd like to pursue a possibility of a process change. And I'm sure you will help me with that.
Absolutely.
And I think that's, and I guess my last thing was just that I think we should develop a process by, council could have workshops to discuss these issues when we get an idea in the head. So we can't send you an email, I can't call you on the phone, and we can't meet at the Starbucks. But, you know, open up these topics of interest and schedule them through workshops if that would be your pleasure, too. That's all. Thank you for my, to my colleagues, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amy. And thank you, everybody. And I guess, thank you, Benita Springs. Thanks for seeing fit to elect me your next mayor. My hat's off to Deputy Mayor Stephen McIntosh and Rick Steinmeier. Thank you very much. It was an interesting race, to say the very least. It was a spirited race, to say the very least. And thank you. Thank you, Benita Springs, and thank you for everybody's input in the process. I think we've touched on a lot of good things here tonight. I'm excited to get going. I am excited to look at the budget. I am excited to start the budget at zero and review every program and review everything. I will be in the process, as I told Carl. Now that I'm sworn in, we're going to be scheduling a meeting. I'm going to come in. We're going to look at the budget. We're going to figure out how we start at zero and work our way up. And my commitment to the citizens of Benita Springs, we're going to build you a better budget, I promise. We have a lot of projects going on. We have a lot of things to do. And we're going to go at it head-on. So with that, unless there's anything else from anybody, I would say thank you very much. Thank you to the folks, and we will now.
I have minutes?
Move on.
Approve the minutes.
Yep, we're going to approve the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion, and we approve the minutes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else? I don't see it here, but do we have final public comment? It's not on here, but final public comment, please. Oh, I know, I got a little cheat sheet up here.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. That's why you're the mayor, because you're the man. You have a good memory. As far as the sunshine law, it is difficult. Now, the answer for a possible solution to the problem is to have council workshops, especially in the beginning here, where we've got a new group starting out to have an afternoon. It's got to be publicly, it has to be open to the public, and it has to be advertised, so that the public, you can't make, you know, you can't do things in a smoke-filled room like they used to do in Chicago, or whatever, you know. But you can talk to each other in a public, in a public forum. And if that, I think that would be very helpful for you all to get started here with the zero budget, which I don't completely understand, but it sounds good to me. And as far as widening the bridges on Big Hickory Island and San Carlo, out on Lover's Key, it sounds like they want to put a four-lane highway from Fort Myers Beach to Interstate 75. And guess what? Little Hickory Island's in the middle, and that's going to be a Third World War just trying to widen Hickory Boulevard. It's in the comprehensive plan not to be widened. They went around that, they called it a paved berm, four feet on both sides, it's eight feet. And what's in the middle is 22 feet. So minimum road is 10. So you've got a three-lane highway over there that we didn't want in the first place. So eliminate widening the bridges on Little Carlos and Big Carlos. And I guess the drawbridge can be repaired. I don't, that's going to be a big expense. They could reevaluate, could evaluate a midpoint causeway across the bay, again. Fort Myers Beach, I see the traffic, it's not going to Benita. It's going to, it's coming from Fort Myers Beach, coming down here to Benita, and then coming back, and it's not to Benita people. It's, now, as far as, I understand the people on Lover's Key have come to the fire department, and they want service. And I understand they're petitioning the state or the county to give them some land out there in that causeway area to build a new station, or put a place to put their boat near the boat ramp. And I think that'd be a good improvement in the future. We do need to take care of those people. But as you see, as you found out, we don't really want them on Little Hickory Island, you know. But, so, good luck, guys, and I'll be seeing you now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Rick.
Carolyn Gallagher, again. This is something that's just been bothering me. And there was just a discussion on three of our priority items. The thing that's been bothering me is about emergency evacuations. If somebody told me I needed to evacuate, I don't know where to go. If I have three days' notice and we're going to have a category four, then I'd leave. But what if we don't? What if we have something in between where we find that we have to get out of our homes? I don't know where to go. I don't know if the Y is a good place or not. I have pets. I also know that I couldn't leave my pets. I need this question answered. And it may take money and planning on the part of the city to do something about it. That's all. Please, think about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
Hello, Alan.
Alan Glazier. Thank you all. Fred, I got an idea how to save $28,000. I know it's not a lot of money, but I think it is. Don't rebuild the water tower. I've lived here 57 years. I was a charter member on the Historical Society, the second president, and been involved with historic preservation, as most of you all know. So I'd like to say somehow we could do a way. If we're not going to preserve it, which I would like to see that brought down and due diligence done to bring it down. In 1988, when we had the Centennial Committee, we set it in the park. We set it with a time capsule and like that, and we had it down, close to the ground. The city set it up in the air. And I don't want to fault anybody in particular, but we dropped the ball. We didn't maintain a historic structure, and that was, the city took it over. We do have a time capsule over in the park that I was speaking of earlier, by the, where the community hall was, and a banyan tree. My suggestion would be to set it there. But whatever, from what I've heard, the Historical Society is interested in taking it. But whatever, do due diligence to save that. If it falls apart, then maybe we can salvage some parts of it or whatever. But don't spend $28,000 to put up something that's plastic, that's not real. Do something else there, that's my opinion, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Further public comment?
You did a really good job.
Thank you.
You had an interesting discussion, and pretty good for you guys on the council. And lady, I'm very excited about you being here. You're very smart. Thank you for forwarding this, because this is part of the dark skies lighting thing, you know, you always hear me talking about. I like, Rick Steinmeier, you're like the idea man tonight. I like the idea of having, like, maybe a monthly workshop, so you can discuss things that are on your mind and be free about them and not be bound to, you know, the grind of the agenda and that kind of stuff. And the, so I think that's a new innovation. I know other cities do that. I know, actually, they have one every week, which is kind of boring. I think in Naples, that could be tedious, you know. You might not need it that often, because, you know, you've got a great staff here and you roll things along. But I like that workshop idea. I think that's something you guys should chew on and see if you can do something about. Other than that, thanks for forwarding this. And congratulations, Arlene. It's awesome. Yeah. She's going to be great for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yeah. And anybody who says you should have a committee and people should volunteer for it, you should appoint them.
Okay. Thank you. Carl, did you have something?
Yes, I just want to clarify for the record. Mr. Steinmeier made some comments and expressed some concerns about the possibility of Hickory Boulevard being widened, that the bridges being widened. We have communicated with the Lee County Department of Transportation. They have no interest in widening the bridges or widening Hickory Boulevard. They would still remain two-lane.
Great.
So everybody knows.
Great. Thank you.
Could I?
Yes, Pete, go ahead.
Amy did ask if other people agreed, and I don't think anyone said anything. So I would say I strongly agree with the concept of having the workshops.
Fred?
Yeah, I'd like to add two things. I want to absolutely agree with Amy, and there are factors, other things we need to do. But I want to make sure we do one thing at a city council meeting in the foreseeable future, that we give a good recognition to Councilman Neil Longcart, who really was the one that kind of pushed us into getting a library, or pushed the county into getting a saliva. So we need to think about that.
Anything further? Seeing nothing further, the gavel is going up. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.